Go ahead and call the Delaware County Commissioners meeting in order. It is Monday, July 17th, 2017, 9:00 a.m. Everybody please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charlie, could you do the roll for us, please? Mr. Henry? Here. Ms. Reagan?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here.
We'll move on down to appointments. We have one for the Airport Authority. Michael Concanon has shown interest in getting on this board. Can I believe you've got a little...
Yeah, I've spoke with Mike. Mike's a pilot, has been for several years. Also, obviously, he's a real good businessman. I made a phone call to him and he had to leave him a message. He didn't answer. He called me back and said he was busy baking. So, he's still hands-on in his business, but I think he'd make a good appointment to the Airport Board, and I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Have motion in a second. Charlie, could you call the roll, please? Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have tabled business agreement for collections of personal property taxes. I believe we still need to keep this table. Is that correct, Charlie?
Yes.
We need to do a roll call, too.
No, there's no reason. It's still on the table. There's no reason to vote.
Yeah, a roll call of attendance.
Oh, we just did that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Well, we're all here.
All but me. I'm sorry. Oh, it's Monday.
Next, we have approval of minutes for July 3rd, 2017.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes for July 3rd, 2017.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Charlie, could you call the roll, please? Ms. Reagan? Excuse me. Henry?
You hear? Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have presentations to Commissioners, VA, and Veterans Upward Bound. Nate?
Good morning.
Morning.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Nate Jones, Delaware County Veterans Affairs Officer. The reason that I'm here today, over the last couple of years, me and a gentleman by the name of Ralph Smith have worked hand-in-hand together in the community to help out our veterans in this county. I'll just fast-forward a little bit. A few months ago, we were approached by a few people in talking about a possible one-stop shop to be able to assist veterans in our community. And rather than having veterans bouncing around in different locations to get the assistance that they need, but to be a pilot, to be able to be a one-stop shop, was presented to us. Long story short, it all basically come to light here over the last couple of weeks, and we've agreed on an opportunity to work together. But we wanted to present that in front of you guys, the Commissioners, to see if you'd be willing to allow us to house together to service all of our veterans in this county. And that includes Vincennes University, which is who Ralph actually works with, and then also Veterans Upward Bound, which is the only Veterans Upward Bound in this state. And so, we would like the opportunity to function as a whole together under our office, Delaware County Veterans Affairs, and wanted to know if you guys would give us that approval.
I understand that we would have to enlarge the office space, and we appreciate the Recorder's Office working with us. How much space are we actually taking?
I think we're taking roughly a hundred square foot, ten-by-ten, ten-by-12 office space.
That's about two, Ralph?
Yes.
People be there. And what would the hours be?
Same hours as ours. Now, one thing I want to keep in mind, we are still a different entity in itself. We are Delaware County Veterans Affairs Office. Vincennes University would be moving into that office at our location. And basically, what it allows us to do is when a veteran comes in, they typically come in for disability pension, aid and attendance type of services. The problem is, is there's a bigger, broad... I mean, there's a lot of benefits to a veteran that they typically would have to chase after. One of the major ones that we see come through our office is education. When a veteran is service-connected disabled, they get an opportunity to go to school for free, tuition-free, at 120 credit hours, and the VA pays for that. And correct me if I'm wrong, guys, anywhere in this scenario, but basically, that's the gist of it, is we can offer our veterans in this county a better benefit and a better one-stop package to do that. Because what happens is they come to my office, they say, Nate, I'm interested in educational benefits. And I say, okay, let me call Ralph. Let me get you over to his office. Well, somewhere between there, here, and there, they get lost. And if we could get some of our veterans better educated, they'd have better opportunities out in the community.
Well, I'm in favor of it. I just... It's just going to be one door off the hallway.
Yep.
And so, I would recommend that we get a 36-inch door for wheelchairs.
Yep.
Make it handy.
Yes, please.
Swing in. And then the hours are posted when they're...
It's not going to be right off the hallway, so you'll still enter our door.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Then they're going to take a ride.
Yes.
We just need handicap accessible.
And to be honest with you, I'm probably going to give the... Whichever office is bigger, I'm probably going to give it to Ralph, just because he's got three guys with him. But we're going to share the common area, which is that front office. We're all going to share that as our goal. And I think that's basically it with that.
So, I have myself, full-time...
Ralph, come up here and state your name.
Yeah.
Ralph Smith, Veterans Upward Bound, Muncie. I have myself, full-time. Isaiah Smith is part-time BU, and then Steve Stark is work-study, as like Nate's other four work-studies.
Ralph, you might have people tell us a little bit about yourself, that you've been doing this.
I think you know how long we go to a lot of the same meetings. I'll just start off. I'm a United States Air Force retired Master Sergeant Ralph Smith, Jr. I live here in Muncie. I'm a Veterans Education Specialist with Veterans Upward Bound. We work under a grant from the Department of Education through Vincennes University. So, I have with me today here Isaiah Smith, who is an Education Specialist Assistant. Stand up, Isaiah. Steve Stark, who is Veterans Upward Bound Program participant and work-study. And then I have Matt Schwartz, who is Vincennes University Assistant Vice President for Outreach and Engagement in the College of Extended Studies.
Also known as your supervisor.
My big supervisor.
Ralph?
In my chain of command and its cadre.
Thank you very much.
Ralph, you got a lady in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
And my director, Ann Gardner.
I'm sorry.
Director of Veterans Upward Bound in Indianapolis. As Nate said, we are the only Veterans Upward Bound program in the state of Indiana. So, Delaware County has this, and we've been here for 17 years. And this is a great day for veterans, for you to support this and help pull us together. Without you, this wouldn't be happening today. So, from this Master Sergeant, I thank you. It's a great day for veterans.
Well, we thank you and all the veterans, and I think this is an important program for Delaware County and for the veterans of Delaware County. And I'll say it again, I think we need to do everything we can for our veterans. And I'm happy to make this work.
We certainly appreciate that. And at this time, if I could have Matt Schwartz, our Assistant Vice President, come up and say a few words.
Yeah. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I'll say that again. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Matthew Schwartz. I'm Assistant Vice President for the Division of Outreach and Engagement at Vincennes University. Excited to be here today in support of veterans in Delaware County. I am privileged to also have our military education program under my responsibility. Our military education program is a very robust program throughout the United States, where we offer programming on military installations from Fort Benning, Georgia, all the way up to Juneau, Alaska. We also teach onboard deployed Coast Guard cutters and Navy ships, and offer an opportunity for active-duty service members to earn a college degree. This allows them to have a better opportunity as they get out of the service and move on to their civilian careers and be a part of the communities on which they belong. So, very excited to be here. I know our President wishes he could be here as well. He said some great things about our programs and is very excited about working with the county directly.
Thank you. I understand this is the first that's been done.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we are getting some good news to...
We'll be the innovators.
Absolutely.
You truly are going to show the rest of the communities how to do this.
Truly are leading the way in the state of Indiana. There are 49 Veterans Upward Bound programs nationwide. We are the only Veterans Upward Bound program in the state of Indiana.
Like I say, I appreciate everybody that's willing to give a little space and work together. And we appreciate you coming today.
And might I... I want to add a couple of quick things, too. I would also like to make it a point to see if you guys are in agreeance that we would like to make this a proclamation day for all of us. I don't know if that's something that you guys are...
When everybody gets done, I'm going to read this.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Just a couple more things. I want to thank you for your hospitality, from the Commissioners to Charlie Walker and his staff, and the work that they're going to be putting in to construct this new office. We appreciate it. So, on behalf of Veterans Upward Bound, Vincennes University, the Delaware County Veterans Affairs Office, I say thank you and hurrah!
Hurrah! Man of this, it's Veterans Upward Bound, Vincennes University, Delaware County Veterans Affairs Office. Whereas Veterans Upward Bound, Vincennes University is hereby honored for its service to Delaware County veterans and recognized for its redesigned partnership with Delaware County Veterans Affairs Office. Whereas Veterans Upward Bound, Vincennes University is a program funded by the United States Department of Education and is the only Veterans Upward Bound program in the state of Indiana. Whereas Veterans Upward Bound, Vincennes University provides free academic service to assist veterans to enter and to complete a college or otherwise post-secondary training program of the veterans' choice. And whereas Veterans Upward Bound, Vincennes University has helped thousands of veterans in Indiana since 1979 and hundreds of veterans in Delaware County since 2000 achieve their higher education goals. Whereas Veterans Upward Bound, Vincennes University in partnership with Delaware County Veterans Affairs Office, Delaware County Veterans Drug Diversity Corps, RCP1, Veterans Affairs, Muncie Mission, Muncie Community Schools Adult Basic Education, Ivy Tech Community College, and Ball State University has helped more veterans this grant cycle than any other served by the Veterans Upward Bound Grant. And whereas Veterans Upward Bound, Vincennes University, co-located with the Delaware County Veterans Affairs Office and with support of the Delaware County Commissioners, will provide greater service and support to Delaware County veterans, a similar organization are growing all over the United States, and Delaware County is leading the way in the state of Indiana. Now, therefore, we, the Delaware County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Monday, July 17th, 2017, as Veterans Upward Bound, Vincennes University and Delaware County Veterans Affair Day. In Delaware County, Indiana, and urge all citizens to express their appreciation and thankfulness for and in support of veterans. Proclaim this 17th day of July, 2017. And we get all the veterans to please stand, and we want to thank every last one of you for everything you've done for our country.
I'll make a motion we adopt the proclamation. You just read.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Charlie, can you call the roll? Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Most definitely is. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to contracts. We have none of those. We'll go on to ordinances for second reading. We have ordinance number 2017-016, ordinance establishing Delaware County Sheriff's JAG Grant.
This is an ordinance on second reading to establish a fund for the JAG grant. I would recommend that you pass this one.
I'll make a motion we adopt ordinance number 2017-016.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Call the roll, please, Charlie. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance number 2017-017A, ordinance amending Section 181 of the Delaware County Code of Ordinance Regarding Copy P's.
I received some proposed changes. I didn't get a chance to incorporate those. I'd asked that you table that one until next week.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Have motion in a second to table. Charlie, can you call the roll? Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance number 2017-013, many new floodplain management ordinance for Delaware County. Martha?
Yes. Martha Moody with the Plank Commission Office. And we have, as I explained when this was introduced, FEMA has a new floodplain template, and also here in Delaware County, the DNR had done a new flood study along York Prairie Creek that had some changes to the flood mapping. And so, FEMA and the DNR asked that we put the new template in with the new maps that will be effective August 3rd. So, I've done that. Substantively, this new floodplain management ordinance is very, very similar to our existing floodplain management ordinance. There are very small little changes here and there throughout that didn't really affect the main substance of it in terms of managing and building in the floodplain. If you've got any other questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
I'll make a motion we adopt the ordinance 2017-013.
Second.
Have motion in a second.
Thanks, Martha.
Charlie, can you call the roll? Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance for first reading, ordinance number 2017-018, being an ordinance to amend the text of the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Regarding Public Works, Swimming Pools, Residential Facilities Used in a Limited Business Zone and Flood Area Zone.
Yes. This ordinance that's amending the text of the zoning ordinance is regarding something that our office calls "little edits." And that refers to like little tweaks to the zoning ordinance to try to either clarify something or make a change to match state requirements. And with the... And in the case of public works, there's a general provision that talks about when there is a public works project that involves the taking of property, that the property will still remain in compliance with the ordinance. And it talks about buildings, but doesn't specify signs. So, basically, that little edit was to add buildings and structures, including signs. So, the next one, swimming pools, that is the result of the state Department of Building, Fire and Building Safety instituting a requirement that says the maximum height for fencing around a pool is four feet. And since that's a building code, our zoning ordinance can't exceed the building code requirement, so we're changing it to four feet, five feet, from five feet to four feet. And then for residential facilities, that is a section, general provision of the ordinance that deals with facilities for people with developmental disabilities and individuals with mental illness, and residential care facilities for those people. The state changed the licensing requirements, the body that does the licensing, and some of the provisions. So, what we've done is we've changed our zoning ordinance to match what the state requirements are. And then the uses in limited business zone, they had a listing that just said schools. In every other zone, it said schools, nursery schools, childcare centers. So, we just added that to make it the same kind of listing in all of the other zones. And the FA Flood Area Zone, the zoning... Along the Mississinawa and the White River, there are flood area zones, which is a zone category in our zoning ordinance that was intended to match the floodplain management ordinance. And over the years, with changes to the floodplain management ordinance, they've gotten a little bit out of whack. So, what I've done in terms of the boundaries of the FA Flood Area Zone is changed the language in that section. Number one, it referred to the Army Corps. The Army Corps no longer has anything to do with establishing the floodplains. That's FEMA. And so, then I also referenced the newly adopted floodplain management ordinance. And the FA Flood Area Zone is intended to mirror the floodway or the undesignedated floodplain areas that set out in the floodplain management ordinance. So, that's basically it. The other thing I might mention is, since this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, we did have the public hearing in front of the Plank Commission earlier this month. So, if you would like, you could consider that the first reading, just like we do with rezonings. And this is... So, if you wanted, you could adopt it.
I was going to ask that, if you had the first part of the public hearing.
Yeah, right.
Under the rules of the Plank Commission, the public hearing is always conducted with the Plank Commission, so that's considered the first reading of the ordinance. So, this would be the second reading, and would be considered adoption.
I'll make a motion we adopt ordinance number 2017-018.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Charlie?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Next, we'll move on to resolutions for approval. We have Resolution number 2017-030, approving a declaratory resolution and economic development plan of the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission and approving order of Delaware County Muncie Metropolitan Planning Commission.
This is for economic development. With the Redevelopment Commission, they're asking that this be adopted. I think this is for the gas area, if I remember right.
69.28, they call it.
I'll make a motion we approve Resolution 2017-030.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution number 2017-031, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Delaware, Indiana, identifying a tax sale certificate to be assigned to a nonprofit corporation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Janet Kessler, Tax Sale Deputy in the Auditor's Office. Yes, I had a nonprofit request for 4221 East Jackson, and the public hearing is for August 7th, 2017. The taxes are severely delinquent. There's $30,000 taxes due on this.
I'm going to approve Resolution 2017-031.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for approval. Charlie, can you call the roll? Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution number 2017-032, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Delaware, Indiana, of a final determination concerning vacant parcels not sold in a tax sale.
Yes, Commissioners, I have 22 parcels that we've received applications for. They paid for the title search and notification costs, and we're ready to deed these properties over to adjacent owners. But I have a drawing before your consideration of this resolution on two properties, 3309 West Devon Road. I have a Jack Hunter and a Michael Clark.
Charlie, can you move it on?
Sure. Can't find them. They're there. And Jean wants to verify that I'm reading the correct name. Michael Clark.
You'll mark that one line through?
Sure will.
Resolution. The second drawing will be for 1603 South Jefferson. I had an application from a Susan Schlinkner and an Andrew and Leslie Draper.
Let my finger this one. And it's Susan Schlinkner.
Thank you.
Let you do that one.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we need a motion to...
Yes, we need a motion in a second.
Seven.
I'll second it.
Charlie, can you call the roll, please? Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Yes. Next, we'll move on to Department Heads and elected officials. Morning, Mike.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm King, Delaware County Clerk. I brought two things today. Hopefully, you'll see them as good news like I do. The first, being a former banker, will do with money. I work with our consultant, our 4D program in the clerk's office. 4D is where the federal government gives back funds as incentive payments for performance based on child support collections, fraternity establishments, and administrative costs. We did back billing on some of our claims through part of 2014 and 2015, and the state has accepted our back billing, so we should be receiving $64,324 back in incentive funds to our general fund. I thought that was good news to share.
It is.
Thank you.
The other item I'd let you know is the Board of Judges, along with the Court Administrator and my staff, have worked and implemented e-filing for our court systems. That started Friday. The state of Indiana had some folks come in and do some training. Friday, we were on our own for the first day, thinking that we would only have three or four on their part, but we ended up with 136 total filings coming through electronically on Friday.
Wow.
So, our court staff, as well as my staff, continues to work through that. So, that should also see some improvements as far as getting the court system up into the somewhat modern age and away from paperwork.
Paperless.
So, we're continuing to work to get to paperless. We've started bulk scanning some of the items in my office, so we should start seeing some of our stacks and rounds of paperwork in the clerk's office. And hopefully, we'll get rid of that building that we're currently paying rent on. So, I never had to pay rent on paper. So, that's all I wanted to share with you today.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone else? Move on to payment of claims in the amount of $1,64,731.23.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Charlie, can you call the roll? Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
We'll move on to questions, comments from the public.
Ralph, I brought your flyer if you want to invite everybody to your... Ralph, I brought your flyer. Do you want to invite everybody to your thing? Is it the public?
No.
No, the public's not invited. I'm sorry. Just veterans?
Veterans and service providers and supporters.
Well, yeah.
I'd like to invite the whole public, but we're a grant from the Department of Education, and they're probably as poor as we are.
I thought they could make a donation. I just thought this was for...
I will put you on our fundraiser committee. Thank you.
And Melanie, once again, thanks for giving up that space for the veterans. We really appreciate it.
Glad you support the veterans.
Yes.
And if anyone wants to come see it, they got it framed in this morning for their office.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm just speaking to Angie, Mrs. Moore, and Angie, would you like to tell them about our bridges, how wonderful everything's going along with all this rain?
Yes, they had to...
Give us some good news.
They had to rebuild their crossings a few times, the river crossing on the Tilson Bridge, due to all the rain, but they have not requested any additional days at this point. The intermediate completion date is scheduled for October 27. Have it open.
If we don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Motion as second. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Please recess.